Are they on now? Yeah, great. All right. Again, it is about 3:15 and we're going to call it a order. If I could, could I get Councilman Flurry to lead us in a brief invocation and then we'll go on to the roll call.
Okay. Let's. Gracious heaven Father, we come to you today asking for wisdom and knowledge. And do, oh God, touch us with a compassion in our heart for our fellow man. We pray that you will bless our city and bless our mayor and administration and councilmen. We ask these things in Christ holy name. Amen.
Amen.
And if you will, please face the flag and with your hand over your heart, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bradford.
President.
Mr. Everson.
Yep.
Mr. Jenkins. Mr. Corbin.
Present.
Mr. Flurry.
Present.
Ms. Lynch. Mr. Bowman.
Here. All right. Thanks, everybody. I know we are on a slightly different day because of the holiday and our schedules didn't allow a couple of our council members to be here today, but we ought to be able to move through this pretty quick. On Tuesday, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the administrative conference on April 27th and the council meeting on April 28th. And at this point, we are at awards recognition of distinguished guests and communications. Do any council members have any awards, recognitions, or distinguished guests to acknowledge? Seeing none, Mayor Tyler, do you have any awards or recognitions or communications at this time?
Not today. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
All right. Thank you so much. And so now we are on to reports. I know Terrence is here. Do we have any questions or matters about property standards that need to be reported at this time? If not, I think we all know Terrence is easy to get a hold of when Dorothy's not around. And so whoever, you know, if you need something to follow up on, please just let him know. Thank you so much. And let's see, so for a revenue collection plan, I think we received that earlier this month.
We did.
And so we've already received that as well as the charity bond forfeiture report would have been earlier this month. Are we going to have a master plan committee report tomorrow, Stephen?
Yes, sir.
Or on Tuesday?
Yes, sir.
Great. So we will have a master plan committee report. Be good timing as they just finished out the Unified Development Code public meetings this week, a series of meetings throughout the week. I want to thank the council members who attended those meetings. I know I saw several of y'all were attending them in your districts and other districts. It looks like the attendance picked up later in the week as they went on, more and more people started coming out. And that's a good sign. It means people are starting to pay attention and, you know, really starting to digest all that is involved in the Unified Development Code. So it'd be great to have a report on that next week. We're not going to have a public hearing on Tuesday, so we can move forward to adding items to the agenda. Shereka, is there any legislation that's going to be added on Tuesday?
None that we're aware of.
Great. Thank you. We are going to have some appointments to be considered on Tuesday. There are several of them. I know at least one of them is here today, and I've heard from a few others who weren't able to be here today. But would you like to read those for us, Ms. Fields?
Sure. Under confirmation appointments, we have for Deputy Director for Information Technology, Mark Santos, and he is here.
He's here.
We have for the Metropolitan Planning Commission, Dale Calvin, and I'm not sure if he's here. Leah Di Marto, Bessie Smith, and those are for MPC. And then we also have for the Shreveport Airport Authority, Ms. Waynette Ballengee.
She's here.
Okay. If y'all would like, I'd like to invite them up, just to say a brief word for Mark and Waynette, if y'all would like to just come say hello. That would be great.
Mark Santos, 1040 Sunshine Lane, Shreveport, Louisiana. What were you going to ask?
Oh, just wanted to give you a chance to just introduce yourself and tell us about the position that you're looking for confirmation to be confirmed to.
Right, Deputy Director. Why don't you come over a little bit in front of the... Oh, I'm sorry. That was the wrong one. Yes, Deputy Director of Information Technology under Dan Thomas, which is the current director. So excited for this opportunity and for the recommendation from the mayor. So as soon as we get on board, I'm ready to get things working.
Well, fantastic. And you've been working in IT for a while and...
About 32 years.
Yeah. I did get a chance to look at the resume. Good. Well, thank you. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Santos? All right. Thank you so much for being here.
All right. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Hello, hello.
Hello, everybody. Waynette Ballengee. I live at 10897 Sunrise Point, and I'm very excited to have the opportunity to work with the Airport Authority. I fly in and out of the Shreveport Airport about seven times a month, and I'm one of those people that never bypasses Shreveport to drive to Dallas or Longview or Alexandria. And I want other people to feel the same way. And I do have a chance to fly into a lot of airports that are similar in size to Shreveport, and I've seen a lot of things that they're doing that I hope we might consider doing in Shreveport. So I am certainly ready to go to work.
Right. Certainly appreciate your service.
Thank you, Mayor Tyler.
And look forward to having you. At least I do. Does anybody have any additional questions for Ms. Ballengee?
Okay.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Ms. Ballengee.
Appreciate you offering yourself for service.
Mr. Chairman, somebody reported to me that the airport this week, that you were on the bottom floor and Councilman Jenkins was on the top floor. What was going on with that?
I was going to pick up my wife from a flight, and he was leaving on a flight. And we did. We crossed ways and then I actually was walking down the hallway and walked right past my wife. And I went there to pick her up. I didn't even see her. But yes, so the Shreveport Airport was active this week. It's good to have council members supporting it and using it. And then, of course, the three, just for everybody's reference, the three appointments to the MPC, those are reappointments of positions those people are currently serving on there. Leah is currently the chairperson, and then Dale and Bessie have both been serving on there for some time. Their appointments were expired, and so we are reconfirming those appointments. So if anybody has any questions about any of those, please feel free to let us know, and we will consider all of those appointments on Tuesday. I don't have any items to be introduced under the consent agenda, but we may have some items to be adopted, I believe. Shereka, did you want to...
Sure. Under Consent Agenda Legislation 8B, there's one resolution, number 97, which is accepting dedication for utility servitude in Lake Shore Harbor Estates. And that is the only resolution.
That's a short section to that time. And did you want to proceed with regular agenda legislation?
Sure. Under Section 9A, Resolutions on Second Reading and Final Passage, for which will require only one reading. Number 92, Accepting Dedication for Riverview Lane and River Run Circle in Riverside Village, Phase Two.
And I do expect to ask to postpone this just one more time, just in terms of timing. We want to make sure that some of those additional discussions related to the riverscape and the area to the south of that is currently under some litigation, and we want to make sure that those conversations have a chance to happen before we vote on this. We may postpone it one more meeting.
Okay.
And then, 94?
94, Modifying the Decision of the Zoning Board of Appeals in Case Number BAC 60-14, Circle K Stores, Inc.
And this one is ready to be moved on now, correct? Great. All right. So introduction of resolutions. Ms. Fields, do you want to read those?
Okay. Number 98, Authorizing the Execution of a Retainer Agreement with the Greenwald Law Firm, LLC. Number 99, Authorizing the Execution of a Retainer Agreement with Mayor Smith &amp; Roberts, LLP. Number 100, Authorizing the Mayor to Make Application with the United States Department of Justice for JAG Grant Funding.
Great. Does anybody have any questions about these? I know we saw, I believe I saw some members of the firms that are mentioned in these resolutions that are here today. If anybody has any questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Are these new firms?
These are new retainers to do business, so they're being approved to be able to be hired as contract attorneys.
Yes.
Perfect. And I'm not one to just take what's out there on social media and respond to it, but there was an article in Fastnet News.
Okay.
Did you see that?
I did. Yes, sir. As a matter of fact, our office provides those numbers pursuant to a public rights request.
I guess my concern was the outsourcing of legal work. Is that an area that we can sort of look at to see what we can do in-house, or is that necessary?
Well, Councilman Bradford, one of the things that we're charged to do is mandate and maintain a competent and efficient legal cadre. So one of the things that I have done since I've taken the office of City Attorney is we actually have a litigation manager in place who helps to manage, is Zelda Tucker, Deputy City Attorney Zelda Tucker, to actually manage the day-to-day activity of the litigation department. Litigation is so vast and expansive that because of the resources that we have in-house, it becomes more cost-effective to outsource that. Now, the management side of it requires that I, as City Attorney, maintain a good relationship with outside working firms and make sure that those firms are working efficiently and effectively to resolve these matters and bring these matters to resolution for the best outcome for the city of Shreveport. So to answer your question more directly, it is necessary for us to have outside legal representation. However, it is incumbent upon me to help manage those, and so I have taken the opportunity now to help select firms that I know are competent and capable of doing the work.
Are these, and I'm looking at two different firms, are they specific, case law specific in what they're going to be doing?
I have taken firms that are efficient and have an experienced level that I consider to be very dynamic, meaning that they've represented the city in previous matters. Greenwald Law Firm, Mr. Joey Greenwald, who will be here on Tuesday, is a seasoned attorney who has practiced in the areas of municipal law for several years and has represented the city in various litigation matters prior to. So they are a varied array. Meyer Smith &amp; Roberts would be a new firm. They are a 14-person firm who has very competent and capable lawyers, and they have a varying practice area there. So when you get those kinds of firms who are efficient and effective, it helps decrease the bottom line for me on a litigation budget standpoint, from a litigation budget standpoint.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. Good questions. And certainly, if I recall, Mr. Greenwald, who's a member of another firm, in the past he did some very good work for the city.
That's right.
And so these both seem like good choices to me.
Thank you.
All right. And so now if we could move into introduction of ordinances, Ms. Fields, can you proceed with introduction of ordinances?
For under Section C, Ordinance 40, Amending the 2015 Grants Special Revenue Fund Budget, and this is regarding the city's energy efficiency program. Number 41, Amending the 2015 Budget for the General Fund. This is reallocations for the city council's office. Number 42, Annexation Tag Number 14-6, An Ordnance to Enlarge the Limits and Boundaries of the City of Shreveport, a 22.57 acre tract of land located south of Long Lake Estates, Unit Number 14, located in Section 28, T-16 North, R-13 West, Caddo Parish, Louisiana. Number 43, Annexation Tag Number 15-1, To Enlarge the Limits and Boundaries of the City of Shreveport, a 6.466 acre tract of land located near the southeast corner of Mount Zion Road and Lynnwood, Louisiana, in Section 1, T-16 North, R-14 West, Caddo Parish, Louisiana. Number 44, Annexation Tag Number 15-2, To Enlarge the Limits and Boundaries of the City of Shreveport, the west 45 feet of the north 300 of the Block, excuse me, of the Brooks Road dedication, located in Section 27, T-17 North, R-15 West, Caddo Parish, Louisiana. And number 45, Annexation Tag Number 15-3, An Ordnance to Enlarge the Limits and Boundaries of the City of Shreveport, two tracts of land lying adjacent to the Southern Trace Development in Sections 29 and 30, T-16 North, R-13 West, Caddo Parish, Louisiana. Number 46, Zoning C-46-15, Amending Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordnances, the City of Shreveport zoning ordinance, by rezoning property located on the northeast corner of Ann Avenue and South Side Drive. The "and" the same is hereby changed from B-2 Neighborhood Business District to R-1B Suburban One Family Residence District. Number 47, Zoning C-47-15, Amending Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordnances, the City of Shreveport zoning ordinance by rezoning property located at the northwest corner of the Greenwood Road and Bert Coons Industrial Loop. The "and" the same is hereby changed from B-3E Community Business Extended Use District to I-1 Light Industry District with site plan approval. And lastly, number 48, Zoning C-48-15, Amending Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordnances, the City of Shreveport zoning ordinance, by rezoning property located on the south side of Levy Street, 225 feet east of Texas Avenue and north side of Levy Street, 140 feet east of Texas Avenue. The "and" the same is hereby changed from I-2 Heavy Industry District to B-3 Community District with site plan approval.
All right. Is there any discussion on these? And thank you, by the way, for not being the standard person who is used to reading these. You had an awful lot of zoning and reannexation ones to read, which can be kind of technical. So thanks for getting through those smoothly. Does anybody have questions about some of these ordinances? I know there's a few that may be worthy of a little discussion. I did want to just mention on ordinance, I believe it's 48, which is the rezoning. That's something I'm very, very supportive of, a project that's been being worked on for a long time, and it's something that is in support of Hope for the Homeless, which is the coalition that works to prevent homelessness and help homeless populations in Shreveport. This particularly would help Christian Services to relocate some of their operations there and provide additional parking. So I would ask everybody for everybody's support on that one.
So the meat of it is the parking?
Yeah, they've been needing, so they're expanding into this location, but in order to meet the requirements for that location, they need additional parking. And so it's been sort of a process of how to get that land appropriately zoned and sited and, you know, ready for expansion.
Great. I appreciate that, because I was on the board of Christian Services when that was being reviewed to move in conjunction with the Hope for the Homeless. And we knew we were going to need additional parking eventually, so I'm glad that that just worked out.
Absolutely. And they've been very patient about it, and I know we've all been, you know, we're trying to work towards this final goal, so I'm really happy to see it coming to fruition.
Mr. Chairman, on 41, I just, I think we somewhat caressed on that. And we understand what we are asking for as it relates to some assistance. Mr. Clerk, are we prepared to move forward with that?
I believe it's on introduction.
So what kind of timeframe we are looking at?
It will be the next council meeting before it can be adopted.
Okay. And then...
But it doesn't mean that the activities that will be funded must wait until then.
Okay. And the person that we talked about, under your supervision, so how would you select such a person?
Well, we received some names from the mayor's office of persons who were available, and one of the council members, Councilwoman Lynch, wanted to go over those, and she has the list, and she's been working with Waynette in our office.
Okay. And I guess my most relative portion would be, in case of emergency, Jack, if we find some funds to put back, because I know this will deplete this portion of the budget to a very minimum amount. So I guess we'll deal with that when we get to it.
I've talked to several council members, most of which say that they have no plans to travel this year. If that's true, then I think that we'll be okay unless it's a real big emergency.
Okay.
That's typically something we sort of overbudget for, just in case, you know. I mean, there are sometimes maybe an occasion where several people need to travel. If we're, you know, during a bond issue or something, you know, there could come up to...
We have to travel. Try with Jared Bowman. He got plenty of money.
You got it. Better get with me, because I got it.
But just to clarify, we certainly do have time to make amendments or adjustments to this after the introduction, if there's something that somebody's not comfortable with. So I think we should be comfortable in moving it to introduction tomorrow. If you do have changes, you know, feel free to either let me or Art or Julie know, and we can make amendments to that. And Councilman Flurry?
On ordinance 40, the revenues from SWEPco going into the energy, I just need a little additional what we...
Yeah, the Energy Efficiency Program is a program that we've had for several years, and AEP made a donation back in 2012. It was a multi-year donation. And so what this is, is moving this year's portion of that donation into the program. And this program is one that provides a discounted rate for homeowners in Shreveport to have an energy efficiency audit of their home. And so there are approved vendors that can contact and ask for that person to come out and do an inspection of where they would maybe be able to make improvements that would provide better energy efficiency to their home. They'll give them a plan. I actually participated in the program. I did it the first year and recommended it to a lot of people because it was a really interesting program and a great way for people to learn how they can be better at conserving energy in their households and particularly helpful to some of our people who live in neighborhoods where the housing stock is older, you know. So highly recommend it to anyone to let your constituents know, and it's been a very well-run program, so.
Mr. Westerman, do you have additional comments you want to make on that?
No, sir. Mr. Chairman did a excellent job explaining what this grant is for you.
Okay. Thank you.
And we appreciate your support.
Well, thank you all. We appreciate AEP, and we appreciate the administration for running a great program. It's really been, you know, I think maybe it isn't in the forefront of people's minds as much now as when we first announced it. So, you know, this would be a good opportunity for us to start explaining it. It's a new council. There's a lot of people who might be able to communicate it as a fresh idea to some of your constituents. So it's a great opportunity to create new interest in the program, because it really is a wonderful program that we offer.
Absolutely. And it's money that people are providing to us.
Yes, exactly. So a great partnership. It's at the right price. And, okay, so great. So I see no more questions on any of the ordinances for introduction. So now we're on to ordinances on second reading. Ms. Fields, do you want to proceed with those?
Sure. Number 30, To amend and reenact Sections of 10-171 and 10-172 and to enact Sections 10-171.1 and 10-172F of the Code of Ordnances relative to alcoholic beverages.
Any questions on this? I know Councilman Flurry did express that he postponed it in order to have some conversations. He's had those conversations, and...
Yeah, I've spoken with Chief Yough about the lowering of the $1,500 to $750.
Great. So you're comfortable moving forward with everything?
Yeah, and it's got criteria in there. Already stipulated that the police department will look at and judge whether they deem the additional two hours or not.
Perfect. Seeing no more questions. Shereka?
Number 33, C-37-15, Amending and Reenacting Chapter 106 of the Shreveport Code of Ordnances Relative to Book Exchange Boxes.
And I'll just say briefly, I have been able to meet with some of the people who are involved in the Little Free Libraries, and I have an additional meeting this weekend with those I haven't been able to meet with yet. They've made some good suggestions. I've also had some good conversations with the MPC staff. And so I anticipate that with this, we will either ask for one more postponement so we can make all those changes at once, or perhaps we could remand it to the MPC for them to make the changes and send it back. So one way or the other, I just think because it seems like we're getting good cooperation from both sides, it might be better to do it that way than to do piecemeal amendments. So that's what we'll be looking at doing, and we will have some good input on that and will be ready to make some suggestion on that on Tuesday. And Ms. Fields?
Number 37, Amending the 2015 Capital Improvement Budget, and this is to modify existing utility projects.
Seeing no questions?
Number 38, Amending the 2015 Capital Improvement Budget. This is relative to the Citywide Street 2014 GOV Proposition 30.
Okay. Councilman Corbin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know this is a project that's kind of had a life of its own over the past three years. If possible, Tuesday or it's fine, because I know we're on a tight schedule. If it's after that, I'd just like to get an update of the expense of this project and the status.
Okay.
And if it's after Tuesday, I completely understand.
All right. Mr. Westerman will take care of that for us.
And just for the benefit of history, you know, since we have several new council members, I just want to clarify that what this is doing here is that this particular street project, in order to move forward, needed some additional funding. And when we sold the first round of bonds, there was some additional proceeds over and above what we anticipated. And so that money was unobligated. So we put that unobligated money towards this project and the amount of $1 million in order to keep the project moving forward, but with the stipulation that when the second round of bonds were sold, that $1 million would be put back. And so that's what's being done here, is the second set of bonds have been sold, that $1 million is being moved back from this project to unobligated bond funds where it began. So this is sort of an accounting move. It's not actually changing, you know, the amount of money that's in the project or anything like that. All right. Let's see. Number 39?
Yes. Number 39, Zoning Appeal C-44-14, Amending Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordnances, the City of Shreveport zoning ordinance by rezoning property located on the north side of Piermont Road, 150 feet east of Line Avenue, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from B-1 Buffer Business District to B-2 Neighborhood Business District, except for the 50 most easterly feet, which shall remain B-1 Buffer Business District.
Great. Anybody have any questions about that? This is the companion piece to the Circle K piece that we discussed earlier. So if anybody has any questions, let us know. But otherwise, I think congratulations to all those that have moved it to this point. It's good to see some resolution.
Absolutely.
Let's see. Mr. Thompson, is there any tabled legislation that would be considered?
I'm not aware of any to be taken up.
Okay. That brings us to property standards appeals. Mr. Green?
Mr. Chairman, I had a quick...
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Ordinance 66 on the MBI Global.
Uh-huh.
Why does that keep rolling over?
It's on the table because there was, yeah, there were some negotiations going on regarding lease and in order to...
It was still ongoing. I got you.
It's still ongoing, but what we wanted to do is keep it on the table so that when the time presented itself that we needed to act, we would be able to do it quickly.
I understand.
So that's what...
All right. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Green, thank you.
Yeah, first property here, it's going to be 618 Argyle Street. The owner is present. Structure still needs a lot of work. Piers on the west side of the structure, if you can tell, also on the west side of the structure, there is a bow in it on the rear of the structure. We still have some seals and piers that need to be worked. All seals and piers need to be completed by the next council meeting. All of the appropriate permits for plumbing, electrical... permits for plumbing, electrical need to be completed. The flooring also needs to be put in. Like I say, I've talked to the owner, he is present, and he has asked for more time. And we're not going to give, oh, excuse me, we're asking you to just give just a short amount of time because we need to see some improvement before we start handing out a lot of time on this.
Chairman?
Yes?
And then I'll speak with the owner. Tell me, tell me, since this property's been in the system, what, what, how would you, what would you estimate the, the activity?
Due to the rain and the weather, it has slowed things down a lot. Anytime you're dealing with seals and piers, you've got to be able to jack these houses up. So you're dealing with a lot of weight. And when you're jacking them up, those jacks sink.
Okay.
So, you know, progress has been slow. But as I spoke with him and told him that we'll give you this next month, but we got to see something.
But you do understand that the rain has impeded what he's trying to do?
Yes, sir.
Wait, where's that one, sir?
This is not my area, yes, I just need to...
Yeah, I think it's Stephanie's, we'll just, I mean, I think if we...
Good afternoon.
How you doing?
Mr. Joseph? That's me.
Tell, tell us, you know, we, where are we, where do you see you in this project?
Well, I know within thirty days I should be to where the council want and myself. But like I said, due to the rain and, and getting footing, it's a lot of weight on my property. And it's putting pressure on me. Because when I'm putting these hydraulics in, I'm not getting any solid foundation for the finish up the sales that I want to fill. And in order to get my good foundation, I've got to have a little dry spot. And I want that foundation done so I can move on and move on. I just want to see this project through. I didn't buy it to play with it or just to look at it. But due to the weather, I'm only limited as to what me and my help can do. So I'm pretty much at, at the mercy of the council right now.
Well, I, I would suggest, what I, what I think would be a good thing to start with, let's do it, let's postpone this for, to our next meeting and give you the time to, you know, we may end up having a lot more wet weather, but...
I'm hoping not.
At least during that time, you may be able to, you may be able to address the seals, but at the very least, you can address the permits and, you know, show us some sign of improvement there so that we know how it's going at that point. And then from there, we can consider giving a longer extension, so.
I, I think that's a wise suggestion, Mr. Chairman, only because I think if it rain, don't rain, in, in two weeks, you should be able to give us some type of progress report.
I should, I should.
Is that, is that what you were suggesting?
Yes.
I'm asking, Mr.?
Yes, sir, June twenty-second is the next.
I'm going to postpone.
Second faster?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Of course, I'm sorry.
We, we had, okay, what was the, we had problems up before, right, to be pushed off again. So what was the problem being to where we still getting to it?
Still in the rainy weather.
Just because of the rainy weather?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So, so we have a motion to postpone until June the twenty, June, what's the date, Terrence?
Twenty-second.
June twenty-second.
He's suggesting a month.
Yeah, a month. I mean, I was, I was thinking two weeks, but I'm comfortable with a month. And if that's, that's your motion?
My motion was for two weeks, for the next...
Oh, okay. Is that what you want?
Yeah. My motion was for the next, the next hearing.
Okay, okay.
And then, and then Stephanie will be here and then we, she can suggest what she wants to do.
Perfect. And I'll, I'll second that motion. And so it's a motion by Councilman Bradford, seconded by the chair. And if we could, unless there's any discussion, pass our votes.
Mr. Bowman?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And that motion passes unanimously. So we'll see you in a couple of weeks. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, thanks, sir.
All right. It looks like it started, it's a lot of work to do, but it looks like it started.
My next case is twenty-eight thirty-seven. I believe you guys, last time they were here, you told them that they needed to secure the front door. So they have secured the property.
So where would we go from, from, from here?
Well, you gave them ninety days.
Right.
Basically, if they wrap that outside, then they need to start on the inside. But the outside, the exterior was, was the main concern.
I believe they were given ninety days provided they secured the front door.
They did.
Now this meeting and they've done that, so.
So is there any, no, no action is necessary at this time?
I don't think any action is necessary.
Okay.
All right. And this next case is sixty-one thirty-two Canal Boulevard. The structure's been totally redone on the outside. The owner is not here. And...
My move, we dismiss.
Say again?
My move, we dismiss.
I second.
Or do whatever it is we need to do to let it, let it go, because that looks great.
Yeah, it's, it's nice.
All right, so motion by the chair, seconded by Councilman Bradford, dismissed.
Okay.
And motion passes unanimously.
Next case is twenty-four oh seven Portland Avenue. Awesome. The roof is, has been totally redone. The structure is finished on the exterior. Basically, what's going on right now as we speak is they are out there cleaning up the exterior of the structure, taking care of the care premise violation. All you pretty much have left to do is put a sink in and sweep and mop.
So should we postpone or just, or dismiss the, I mean, are y'all?
The owner's here, let me, let me ask you. Yes.
It looks like great work.
Yeah, it is. Great progress.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. The sink, the sink he's talking about is from another job. The sink, the sinks is in the house. He said that he had seen it in there and he thought, well, he's putting it in, but we're not. That was just another sink they brought from another job.
The question, Mr. Bates, is it?
Sir?
Isn't it Bates?
I'm sorry?
Your name?
Bass, Gary.
Bass, Mr. Bass?
Bass, like a fish.
I mean, I want to congratulate you and your, and your crew for, for the job you've done on this property. And I came by and it was, you know, it's...
We've had, we've had a thousand people come by there and tell us they wished everybody's houses, you know, people who's remodeling would do that to it. But like I said, you know, my partner, he don't spare no expense. He wants to, you know, all our houses look nice, so.
Well, you, you've, you've, you've pretty much followed up and done everything that you'd said you was going to do. And the question, the question, the question is, do we dismiss it or do we need to have them to monitor you until the sink is in and is complete?
Well, like I said, the sink is in. He's seen a, a sink that came from another job. The guys just had it sitting in the house.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Chairman, is that your understanding?
It's, it's very possible. What I said, what I saw was the sink sitting on the cabin.
Okay, you didn't, you didn't take pictures of the actual room that the sink was going to go in?
I can show you what I saw.
But if you look too close enough, there's, there's a sink in there.
I'm looking through a window.
Okay, oh, okay. So my, my question to you now, Mr. Bass, is you had said that, that you was going to try to, that somebody was waiting to rent it?
Well, yes, sir. I've already got it set up for the first for it to go in.
For who to go in?
Yes, for the customer.
On the first?
Yes, sir, uh huh. This coming, this coming month.
But that'd be for our next meeting, then?
Yeah.
Next Monday.
I mean, I, I think from what I see, I mean, I'm probably comfortable.
Everything, everything that Dorothy had asked me for, you know, like in other words, remember when I come in, the house hadn't been roofed yet. We roofed it like the next couple of days. And of course, well, actually, we did everything. Since I've been here, I mean, the house looked like, you know, it was bad.
The house is actually, I didn't see the sink, but the house is actually in, in...
Yes, sir, there's a sink in it. Yes, sir, that sink that was in there was from another job. The guys just probably didn't let it there.
I second. I'm sorry.
Seconded by?
Seconded by the chair.
We're three doors down, so.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Congrats. Good work.
All right.
Is that everything?
Absolutely.
Is that everything today, Terrence?
Yes, sir, that is it.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. That's some good results. I'd like to see, I'd like to see people doing what they're supposed to do. That's good.
Mr. Chairman, let me, thank you, Terrence. And, and it's, that's why we have to be very careful and sensitive to, 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 to properties being demolished. If we can save a property, we need to, we need to give that every consideration because this property was that close to being demolished. And now it's, is, is one of the bright spots on Portland Street.
Absolutely. That's a great point you make. And...
Ain't the case with all of them.
That's true.
Not the case with all of them now, but yeah, that one is. That's a great point.
I think, I think the standard, Councilman, is, is, is progress and good faith, the follow-up. If people are investing resources in, in old properties and rebuilding them, and they're showing us constant progress, I don't think anybody would, you know, would, would squander their, their, their resources on something that they're not going to eventually complete. So I'm just saying, it has to be, you know, twofold, that, that they're, that they're showing good faith and they're showing progress every time they show, coming forward.
Right, and that's, that's the key.
It is, it is. And I, you know, absolutely, it's important that we continue to monitor these, you know, I mean, without, without having had this case continued and without having had property standards monitoring the progress of this, we don't know that they ever would have completed the work.
Is that...
I mean, so it is an important process and, and one that, you know, we can't always predict. We don't always have complete control over how the citizens are going to respond to the actions of the council. But, you know, that's, that's why we do it the way we do it. And, you know, it's happy to, it's, it's good to see more than one example today of where, you know, it's worked out the right way. So fingers crossed, let's hope for a trend of maybe other people will see how good it feels to, to, to be done with a property standards violation and, and have a great property that is compliant. So let's see, I think we don't have any ABO appeals today, but on Tuesday, we do have a zoning appeal. Ms. Fields, do you want to read that one for us?
This is zoning appeal, B A P dash thirty-six dash fourteen, special exception use, applicant is Moore and Associates, Inc., owner of Trinity Baptist Church of Shreveport, Inc. Location is thirty-one forty-two Burt Coons Industrial Loop, north side of Burt, Burt Coons Industrial Loop, one thousand six hundred and eighty west of Walker Road. Existing zoning is R dash one D. Requested use is K dash A for Charter Public School.
All right.
There are two law firms involved in this, and we've sent you their comments via email. We did not send you this package. These are letters and petitions from members of the public concerning this. We can circulate it here and let you look at it, or if you want us to put this electronically or to make copies, whatever you'd like to do.
I like a stand electronic version if that's...
You want us to put all of that?
We just attach it to the... Yeah, can you just scan it through and then attach it on the...
Not these.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I want to understand.
These are people who are opposed.
Opposed?
Yes.
Were these, were these, were this, were these signatures and petitions presented to the MPC, do you know?
I don't know.
Who can tell us?
We just got them, uh...
Huh?
Do you know?
Mr. Jean, do you know, so this is a set of letters and signatures that we've received. Do you know if y'all received the same?
I do not. Mr. Thompson showed those to me before the meeting. As my understanding, most of these are new, but we, we'd have to take those and analyze them to our record to see it.
Okay, but y'all didn't have the same set. It's not, it's not, it's not something that y'all have handed over.
I don't believe so.
No, we got these directly from the attorney.
From the attorneys.
Okay.
So further appellate.
People who are opposed.
Yeah. So that, that would have altered the, the conversation or the debate in the, in the MPC meeting. Can you, can you reflect on what, how that conversation went as it relates to the pros, the opponents and the proponents?
We, we had a number of people opposed to, to this decision. Primarily, one of the, I guess the, the thing that we heard the most was traffic-related concerns. And we heard some concerns regard to, to drainage. There was fairly extensive review of traffic and a traffic impact study that was reviewed by the, the state District Four D O D T. And there was some delay on this case because of trying to make sure that those, that was thoroughly reviewed by the state. Once we got back from staff that there were no issues in regard to that, that was discussed in the hearing. So I believe those were the two issues in my mind that stick out that, now, there were some just flat opposition for the, for the school itself, some expressions and questions of whether or not it had been approved through the school board or through the state at that point. Of course, we, our bodies strictly looking at it from the standpoint of land use.
And, Mr. Chairman, I was, again, my, my concern is that the information that, that was presented to the MPC and you and the board made their determination on, on, on the facts and information that was presented there.
Yes, sir.
Now, we have new information.
But I think, I think that what it represents from looking at it, I mean, I think it's a, it's a statement of opposition from a group that I believe was already in opposition. So while it is a new expression of sentiment, it's probably not drastically different than what was expressed to y'all in the original discussions. I mean, you're welcome to take a look at it and see, but, but it looks similar to comments that were made during the meeting. It's just they're now in written form.
Okay.
So, so while it's significant, I don't think it probably is a surprise, you know, I think it's probably a similar sentiment.
And, I'm sorry. No, no, I was just going to follow up and say that, again, our, as I understand, the preview is to consider, you know, either, either sustaining overturning the MPC based on what happened at the MPC. And, and you're saying this does not...
Oh, yeah, no, you're welcome to consider that. Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think it's appropriate to consider additional correspondence that's come in, you know, I mean, it, consider it like you would a public comment during, during the discussion about it, you know, I mean, it's...
It's a whole new situation.
It's comments from citizens who have an opinion about it, yes. So certainly, it's appropriate to consider.
Chairman, Mr. Glass would be a better one to comment on this, but I don't think that the council is limited to what happened at the Z B A or the MPC. I think that you can, this is like de novo, this is a new matter, you can treat it as a new matter and make a decision that you think is the right one.
Including...
I would agree with that. He's, he's been listening.
Yes. Including remanding it back to the MPC? Is that an option too?
That is an option under the ordinance. If you, in other words, you can make the decision yourselves, including new information that possibly wasn't brought up at the, I think this was Z B A. But a different, another option is to remand if you feel like there's some reason why they should reconsider it.
Yeah, so we could affirm, deny, or remand.
Because I, I heard, and all these are, are these proponents or opponents?
Opponents.
Because I heard there was some, some, some petition with, with some proponents. Is, is Flurry aware of anything like that?
If they have, they've been heard from it.
Okay.
It's also pretty common too, but in an appeal like this, that, let's say, five people speak at the Z B A hearing. By the time it's appealed, it's not uncommon for the council to begin to receive petitions and letters and, you know, on the same general topic. But a lot of more people come out of the woodwork, I guess, if you will, by the time we have an appeal.
Yeah, so that happened, you know, and it's probably just because a decision's been made at that point and they realize there's an appeal. So a lot of times, we hear from people that may not have commented before. So it's fully appropriate to, but, but yeah, we have received some information on, on this particular issue. And I've got a request to speak from Councilman Flurry, is it, on, on this issue as well, I would imagine? Yeah, great.
Mr. Chairman, do, has it happened in the past where the city did an actual traffic study?
I believe a traffic study...
I know this one was done by D O T. Do we do any traffic studies ourselves?
Um, I don't see Michael, Ehrland, or is Robert, there's Robert is still here.
We do, but it's a state road. It's a state road. It's not a city.
So if it's a state road, the D O T D would do a traffic study. If it's a city, is that how it works?
Okay, in this particular situation, the study was not done by the D O T D. It was done by an independent third party on behalf of the applicant filing for the issue with the state of Louisiana. As far as the city goes, yes, we have... As far as the city goes, yes, we have done traffic studies in the past, but those are generally intense, man-intense type of studies. And sometimes, right now, traffic engineering has difficulty with the number of people necessary that would be to perform those type of studies.
Well, Westman, I understand that this is a real strong important, the decision that we're making to that neighborhood out there and what I've heard you say, now, you correct me, that you don't have the manpower and the traffic engineering to do that traffic study.
The traffic study could be done by traffic engineering, yes, sir, but it is a man-intense type of study and it would take away from the current job duties and responsibilities of current personnel of traffic engineering in order to complete that necessary study.
Okay.
It would be possible, but it's shorthanded, so it'd take them off other jobs.
I understand.
Yes, sir.
And Councilman Bowman?
I didn't, I don't know if this was you or for zoning, but have they completed all the, everything that they need to do as far as, where are they now with, as far as the school is being designed?
I have to defer that to zoning as far as that goes.
Just asking, where are they now? Have they gotten everything, all approvals and everything else they needed to move forward with the school or what else?
As far as I'm aware, now, the only approvals that we would be dealing with is related to the decisions done by the MPC and the ZBA. I'm not aware of other approvals outside of that as far as a charter school itself. We, that is something that we, it's not a part of the criteria in which we review it. So I'm not aware of whether or not that they did get approval through the state or through the parish.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Bradford?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
In light of, in light of the information that this traffic study was done by an independent surveyor who was hired by one of the plaintiffs, is that acceptable?
All of the traffic impact studies are done by independent engineers or sources. There's a requirement by the state to provide one, but they're done independently and then reviewed by the state. So they would...
It's like expert witness, they gonna say what I pay them to say, ain't they? I mean, basically, that's how that works. I mean, if I pay somebody to do a traffic study and I'm compensating them, man, they're gonna, I want the results to be what I want it to be.
Well, what, the purpose of the review by the state is they're gonna be looking at those numbers and they're gonna look to see if what was provided to them is correct. And so there were some changes that I understand, and we don't get into the review ourselves. When we did monitor, we do make sure that we're communicating with the state as the project gets reviewed. And there were a number of questions and concerns that, from our understanding, were answered. So there is, there is a scrutiny that does take place by traffic engineering on the state level, which through District Four. The principal person that we work with is Mr. Jim O'Leary from District Four offices. And he reviews those and he also reviews those with his superiors and then they make comments. And the general process is, I hardly, rarely see any traffic impact study that isn't adjusted to some point or another during the review. They're, they may question, you know, the trip generation numbers that are provided or the traffic counts that were provided, or they may want them to look at different things and they will respond. So I understand there was a similar process that went through on this case where there was some communications going back and forth and some adjustments to that traffic impact study.
So the reason that the review of the study failed to the state is because of state highway?
Yes, it's within their jurisdiction. They're the ones that are the permitting authority for the driveways.
Sure.
So when, anytime that there is a driveway permit required by the state and they're the reviewing authority, if it occurs in any other place, we're working with Robert Westman primarily when it comes to traffic engineering issues.
So, Mr. Westman, it wouldn't, the city had no jurisdiction over this anyway, is that right?
City participates in review of comments from the state Department of Highways. We look at it from the standpoint, because generally, sometimes in a traffic study, if a signal is warranted, because of the current contract we have with the Louisiana Department of Highways, we maintain the signals that they put up on state highway systems within the city of Shreveport. So we are involved from that aspect. We do coordinate very well with Jim O'Leary as far as the review of these traffic studies because, again, two different sets of eyes looking at the study and doing a review of the study is very beneficial to the public agencies.
I see. Okay. All right, so, I mean, I see now why it would be more advantageous for everybody to have an independent reviewer, I mean, person to do these because it would take up a lot of resources from state or city.
Yes, sir, it does.
And that all you need to do is review it and most likely, they can't, they can't, they can't sort of trickle the numbers.
No, they can't fudge the numbers. As Stephen told you, trip generators, there are very defined standards that we use in traffic engineering that according to the International Traffic Transportation Engineers Association that tell us, these are the range of how many vehicles per day are gonna be using this type of facility. And it's generally based on the size, the character, if it's a drive-in, if it's a sit-down type situation. We use those numbers in order to project future traffic demand. We take the existing traffic demands that are on the highway, project it over a five- or ten-year, twenty-year period to look at what type of traffic we're gonna be looking at twenty years without the facility. And then now you put the facility in there and the traffic is generated from that facility.
Okay. Wonderful, great. Thank you, sir, I appreciate that. Appreciate it, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you so much, Councilman. Let's see, at this point, we have no other appeals today. Are there any reports from officers, boards, or committees? Seeing none, is there a clerk's report today?
I gave you those wonderful documents, Mr. ...
He did.
He said I got a report over here.
And so we don't have, we don't actually have a space on the agenda at this point for public comments, but we did have a request for public comments, so I would just ask that we hear this one request and allow three minutes to Reverend Linus Mays.
Thank you, Chairman Jefferson, appreciate it very much. Just want to formally invite you all because we have been going from each neighborhood to neighborhood on black-on-black crime, educating people and trying to help our community. It'd be nice to see some of our council members out there that's in support of what we're trying to do as well. We're gonna be at C.C. Antoine. We was at the park there in Moretown. We've been from park to park, we're going to every park within this city and we just pray to God that we can have our council members to come out to support us as well. Also, I'm asking that if we could, I know it's been noted that body cams been around for quite some time, which I found that that's not to be the case, but I am asking this council, I don't know when your next budget, that we can include, like the sheriff department is trying to do, when I spoke with Sheriff Prater, that we can include in the budget perhaps body cams on police officers where that can protect the public as well as the police officer himself. So with that being said, I appreciate you, appreciate your time, know you guys are busy. Thank you very much. We would look for you to be there. It's gonna be at C.C. Antoine Park. We going from neighborhood to neighborhood, myself, Dr. Cash, and others, Bishop Fred Carwell, senior, we all have teamed together along with other ministers to try to bring some awareness to help our community. So we would look forward to seeing you all there. We're gonna be at each neighborhood. Thank you very much, God bless.
Thank you so much, we appreciate that. And that being said, we have nothing else on the agenda, this meeting is adjourned.
Good job.
You ready, you did a good job, you got us out quick.